Hope everybody's doing well. We're gonna call our, um, our city council work session to order. Today is Monday, June 10th, 2024, 4:32, forgive our punctuality. First on the agenda is a review of changes to the new personnel handbook prior to final adoption. Ms. Hannah?
Good afternoon. Um, okay, so, uh, I'm gonna call them minor changes. Um, we had two sections in the handbook which were referencing residency requirements, which is not in line with the practice that we have for on-call and standby employees. So, um, those two sections have been cleaned up to say that residency may be required. So that gives us a little bit more leeway in, um, on-call and, uh, standby employees and where they live, so that we can maintain our on-call list. The next section, which, uh, did include, um, a more thorough update was in regards to computer usage. We had an out-of-date paragraph which stated that employees are to share their passwords with their manager who shares the password with IT. That's obviously an out-of-date practice and not something that we have in place. So our IT department provided me with some language that is in line with our current practices. And then the last change is to the vacation leave accrual. Um, our original accrual table which was presented had increases from, uh, with each bracket, 80 hours to 112 hours to 120 to 160 to 200. Uh, so that put an employee who moves from the six to 10-year bracket, um, and into the 10 to 14-year bracket only gaining eight hours of vacation time. And that didn't seem to really align with the purpose of, um, increasing our vacation accruals. So, we adjusted that. So the new vacation accrual bracket goes 80, um, hours per year, then 100 hours per year, then 120 hours, then 160, and then 200 hours. So that is all of the changes so far, and hopefully it.
I have a question. Uh, Marcus, I have a question for you on this, on the, uh... So I see this is item five on tonight's agenda, final adoption. Were those changes substantial enough to require, um, re-advertising of that ordinance? And publishing of that, and then reintroducing it?
Can you give me a minute to look over work notes?
Yeah, you can take, and then let us know before the meeting.
Okay. Any questions, council, as far as anything that Ms. Hannah has just previewed for us as far as those changes are concerned? Nothing major, right, Ms. Hannah? Just some housekeeping things?
That was it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. And, uh, council, I guess you'll... Rich, um, uh, Marcus?
Yes, sir.
We'll just kinda hold off on that one. We would have to make that amendment prior to the meeting if, if it's to be held off, correct? Yeah, okay. Yes, sir. All right. Next on the agenda, guys, is, uh, we're gonna talk about utility interns. Oh, that's the mayor? Very good.
Actually, it's not going to be me. Um, I just wanted to... We... I'm gonna let Wes come up and talk. Wes and Hannah have kinda been the lead on this, on this program for the utility interns. But as y'all know, we've been participating in this program for a couple of years. This allows, um, high school students from across the county to, um, apply to work in internship in the summer with not only Fairhope Public Utilities, but Riviera and North Baldwin. Um, there's a lot of different utilities who participate. It's a chance to give them a career path into, um, into municipal utilities or to, um, government. Um, I've told them when we were doing orientation that if there is another area of government they see they would like to work in, to let me know that and we can have them shadow. Because there's so many opportunities that people, when they come to the city, don't realize that there's career opportunities like in planning or warehousing or whatever it might be. So, um, wanna make sure we give those, them those options while they're here. But I'm gonna let Wes tell you a little bit about the intern program, then we'll introduce the interns.
So we had an opportunity last year. The gas department was the first department within the utilities to do this. We, we had two interns last year, and I'll, I'll be completely honest with you. I was skeptical at best going into it. And I thought, I was like, you know, I don't know how much they can do, how much we can expose these men and women, or, you know, men and women too, going into a very adult workforce in a, in a, around a volatile fuel in the gas department. But, you know, I was surprised, and I am a, I am a proponent now of this program, because I was able to see the full circle that comes around. Because just about three weeks ago, we, we, we posted a job and had one of our interns from last year apply for that job. We have since interviewed him, uh, and he is one of the candidates for hiring after graduation. And so when you see this thing go full circle, it, 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 one, it... For these people who either want to pursue a career in this field or want to take this experience and apply it to whatever college or, or secondary education that they choose to pursue, it is a, it's a great thing. It's not a daycare, you know, because at first I was like, where's... And there's nothing for these kids to do, but there really is. Like, so, I hope that you will continue to support it. Uh, my mind has been changed on, on, really, the intent and the origin of the species of why it was created. And it's a good thing. Uh, so we've got, we've got eight this year, uh, six in utilities and two in public works. Uh, the two public works, uh, interns are facilities maintenance and fleet maintenance. So they're working, you know, the, uh, infrastructure within the city, and then we've got the, we got the six in utilities. So, I, I applaud these, these men and women for doing this. I don't call them boys and girls anymore. They're not boys and girls. They're young men and young women. Because, you know, it's something that, you know, there's, there's some sweat equity involved and some commitment involved. They've got a lot of extracurricular things going on, because they're incoming seniors. So there's a lot of school stuff on them, and then taking this on additionally is a significant increase in their responsibility. So they've, they've done a great job. Uh, the eight that we have, we're impressed with. And, and the whole program as a whole is something that we look forward to either, you know, increasing or at least maintaining our, our relationship with them. So we, we appreciate your support.
Yeah. Uh, council? Anybody want to respond to any of that? Mr. Wes, I said... Go ahead.
Yep. I was just gonna introduce the interns.
Okay.
So, um, I think we're missing a few tonight, but we have, um, Asher Fowler.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, 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 no.
Oh, no.
Yeah, stand up, brother.
No, 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 there you go.
There you go.
Um, Asher, would you wanna come up and tell them where you're from?
Yes, ma'am. No worries, Asher. I, I got you, brother.
Hello?
Hello, sir.
Hello, my name's Asher Boo Fowler. Uh, I go to Spanish Fort Middle School, our high school.
That's okay.
Wow.
Yeah, pressure bus pipes, pop chains?
I'm working in, uh, water right now currently at, uh, Fairhope Utilities.
Very good.
You enjoy it so far?
Oh, I love it. Yeah, it's amazing. So...
You learn a lot?
Yeah.
Good.
So every time you come, you're gonna have to come to councilman, you have to come up and speak for us. That's a part... I'm teasing you.
Hey, it gets easier, trust me.
It does. That's, that's what we have to do.
No problem.
Congratulations.
Okay, um, Aiden August?
My name is Aiden August. I go to Bayshore Christian School. Um, I'm 17. I'm from Robbersdale, Alabama.
All right.
Where are you working?
I'm working...
What department?
Oh, right now I'm in the gas department.
All right. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm...
We hope you know, know the difference between gas and water, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, I'm rotating from all three. Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, buddy.
Tristan? It's Tristan Blackington.
Hello.
My name's Tristan Blackington. I go to St. Michael Catholic High School. Uh, I'm 17 right now, and I work at the water department right now.
Very good, my friend.
Uh, Fairhope.
Are you Morgan's brother? Are you Morgan's brother?
I am Morgan's brother.
Very good. Sweet, sweet girl.
No, she's my sister.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Colin? Oh, Colin, not Colin, Colin. Sorry.
Colin has a colon.
I'm 17. I go to Fairhope High School, and I'm working in the electric department right now.
All right, Colin.
Yeah, I rotate the gas nodes.
Good, wonderful.
Very good, Colin.
Yes.
Good.
All right, very good, very good.
Quinn? Is Quinn here? Quinn's not here. Um, Caleb? Caleb Kirkpatrick?
Kirkpatrick, all right.
Hi, it's great to meet you all. My name's Caleb Kirkpatrick. I work under the building maintenance category. I'm not rotating, like most of them. Um, 17, I go to Fairhope High School, and I'm loving the internship so far.
All right, very good. Another engineer.
Thanks, sir.
We have two other, um, interns that weren't here tonight, Benjamin Jones and, um, Colton Rayner. But I got to go to the, um, when they signed that they're going... They do it like a signing day, just like they do for athletes, and they get to sign their commitment paper to be an intern. So, I just wanna have a chance to expose y'all to these, um, interns and, and let them tell you a little bit about themselves and for y'all to see that they're here this summer. Um, we look forward to having them through August. They'll have a, you know, graduation ceremony that's, um, really nice for them, and all their parents come and everything. So we're really glad to have them and glad to continue to support this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this, I, I mean, this program is awesome, Mary. I mean, I am ecstatic about this. When we first said we were gonna do it, we were trying one guy, and now we got, what, 14, eight guys? Okay, yeah, eight guys. So, I mean, this is the way that we're going in all directions as far as society. We need to give our kids an opportunity to bridge out of high school. Everybody's not going to college or may not wanna go to college immediately, so this is perfect. And we just passed laws up at the higher level for our workforce, Alabama. I think this falls right into it, man. We're hitting the home run with this one.
And there was probably, was there, what, about 50 kids participating during all these tools?
Oh, yeah, so, uh...
Yeah.
Here's John.
Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Wes, we, we require the young men to stand up, so...
Yeah, yeah. Yes. Very good, very good.
Thank you, Wes.
Take advantage, kids, seriously, because this is a great opportunity for you guys. So please take advantage of it, and, um, tell your younger friends to do the same. Y'all be great examples for them to come, those that are gonna come behind you, okay?
No. I got something to ask.
Yes, sir.
Is there, for the city, is there an age limit on the utility interns?
As far as the lower age?
And, uh, for the city, I mean, I know the city's not under OSHA regulations, but is there an age limit for utility work?
Uh, it's 18.
18?
Yes.
I just noticed, most of those are 17.
Well, they're not.
So they're not driving city vehicles or any city equipment?
Or getting in ditches or this type of thing, so it's not, that's not a problem?
No.
The second question I got, and I laugh at this, because when my kids came to me telling me how they had this great internship program, being a father, my first question was, well, what's it pay?
That's, uh...
Nothing.
Well, no, they...
I wanna make sure we're not in that same category.
Y'all approve the funds.
They get money.
I just wanna make sure.
Y'all approve the transfer fund, you make sure we can cover all the...
There was, didn't have an internship, you paid money.
Legally, I think nowadays you have to pay the interns something. Is that correct? My, my, Ms...
Well, we have, we have these interns, and then we have one that is working, um, she's a college intern. She's working in pages department, which was budgeted.
Right.
She's doing, um, modeling, welding. She goes to Auburn, and she's interning in pages department. She's a college student.
Right.
But, um, we pay them, we pay them.
Yeah, we, I, I...
I'm just, you know, this is years ago.
I think it's easier to pay them.
Every time I hear intern, I think about that.
Yeah, I think it's easier to pay them legally. Um, that's come up hot topics. All right, guys, very good. I'm, I'm excited that we have that, though. Leading the way, as usual. Um, number three, agenda item number three is committee updates. Committee updates, guys.
So, uh, we have an important airport authority meeting...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Yeah.
And, uh, in that, uh, we will be evaluating some proposals that we were giving. We put out an RFP, uh, for, uh, to, to run our FBO. And, uh, I think that the committee was not on it. They, uh, have selected one that they would like to do following negotiations. It's kinda like when we, uh, or the mayor might, uh, select a professional service provider, and we allow it to, to move along with negotiations. So, uh, anyway, that's, uh, moving along really, really well. It'll be a very, very important, uh, meeting for the Fairhope Airport Authority tomorrow. Uh, but being the first of the month, I don't have any other committee to report on.
Councilman Conyers?
I do not have any updates at this time.
Okay.
None for me.
Councilman Robson, councilman Boone? And I don't have any either at this time. Okay, guys, um, department head updates. Let's move into the agenda.
Good evening, council. I've got one item on the agenda, number 22. Uh, this was on the agenda probably a couple of months ago. A city attorney pulled it. There was some kind of discrepancy on the agreement. I think everything's worked out, because it's back on the agenda. This is for that short-term rental property management software from Granicus. Total price was $4,850.42. This is, uh, agenda item to approve the agreement.
On the budget?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and this should bring us, hopefully, this'll capture a lot of revenue for us from hitting short-term rentals.
All right.
So, yes, sir.
All right.
Any questions, council, on this one? It's pretty straightforward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening again. I have agenda items 11, 12, and 13. We'll start out with the good news, 11. Uh, this is seeking approval for us to pursue $15 million from FEMA to, to fund the, the rest of our cast iron replacement. Uh, there's no match associated with this. It's 100% funding, so I'm assuming you guys are good with that?
That'd be a yes.
Anything you get, I think that would be the winner.
Um, we will come before you with some grant assistance, uh, probably next time. Uh, something that, that will be, we'll discuss at a later date, just gonna put that on your radar. Um, but at this point, we're just you guys giving us the nod on, on pursuing that grant from FEMA, which is 100% no-match. Number 12, uh, we are replacing a gas line under Dolleve Creek. The state required us to do a topo survey that we weren't expecting. We went $3,300 over budget on that. That's what line item number 12 is to address. Number 13, uh, is a contract to extend, uh, a regulatory compliance action that is budgeted, that, that has been ongoing for years. This is just a continuation of a relationship with Pipe Suite, uh, to handle that regulatory compliance work. Uh, and that's it.
All right, council?
Questions?
None for me. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you, Wes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hopefully, most of mine are pretty routine. Uh, number nine is requesting, uh, y'all pass a resolution accepting the FEMA hazard mitigation grant, uh, for the city of Fairhope's first responder safe room. And, uh, that is a 10%, 90% of, uh, uh, fund and grant. Uh, and just making a note, there is, the grant management fees are already built into that grant, but we're just, uh, pointing out that that was what is set aside, uh, through FEMA for that services. And just as part of this process, to kinda tell you where we are, y'all are hopefully gonna approve, uh, the mayor to sign and authorize, uh, the grant agreement. We are already starting the advertisement for the architectural services to do the design work. So hopefully, the next thing you're gonna see is a, um, uh, approval of the selection and authorize the mayor to negotiate not to exceed on architectural services. And we already know what that number is. It's built into the grant. The architect has to be willing to do it for that, as well as we'll have, uh, the updated grant services agreement that you will see, uh, for the backend of this project. So, um, you know, we, we had a little discussion. We could very well, uh, hopefully be, have a safe room available to us at the start of the next hurricane center, uh, season if we can hit all our marks right. So we're excited about that. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on that. And you gotta remember, we're gonna get credit for the land toward our match. So actually, it won't be all hard cost dollar-wise when it all said and done. They will give us, uh, fair market value for the land that we provided for the safe room there on the Pecan, uh, facility campus. So that's always a good thing. Uh, number 16 and 17 are both change orders, which I know that we have briefed y'all on as those, uh, conditions were found. Uh, the first one is, uh, the change order for the Pecan Building Warehouse Roof. As you know, as they started stripping the roof, we found it had a double layer of roofing on it. So we had to, uh, handle the, uh, the cost of additional roof removal and as well as the opportunity to, uh, add additional parking on Pine Street, which is, they're laying pavers today, and I think it's gonna really look spectacular. Uh, and I'll be glad to answer any questions on those two. 18 I'm excited about, because you guys have heard us talk about, uh, Magnolia Beach for years in sand. Uh, we, uh, did advertise requests for, uh, qualifications for professional engineering services with emphasis on coastal engineering. And we are recommending, uh, to you GMC, but if you didn't look through your packet completely, you notice that their partnership is with South Coast Engineering, which is Dr. Scott Douglas and Dr. Brett Webb, who are probably the premier coastal engineers in, in the eastern shore of Alabama. And this project is 75% coastal engineering and 25% survey and, and traditional civil site. So I think that's a good team, and, and we're recommending you, uh, to approve that selection and authorize the mayor to negotiate not to exceed for those professional services. And, uh, those dollars are outlined in that grant as well, so it's not gonna be a surprise to anybody. And then, uh, number 19 is a housekeeping item. Um, we, we have monies budgeted for our consulting forester, but we've let the contract, uh, get a little, uh, long in age, and we're asking for a one-year renewal. I think we will not probably ask for it a year from now. He is working closely with our hired park ranger forester, and our, our employee is going through the process of getting his burn certifications as well as his urban forester certifications. So hopefully, we will not need to have those consulting services going a year from now. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Richard, on the FEMA, is, that's, that's one we've been working on for a while, correct?
Correct.
Jessica started on it many years ago.
Yeah, this was, this was applied immediately for immediately falling Sally, so that's almost four years ago, so...
Yeah.
Uh, then, and this, these funds were created by the Sally disaster, so that's what, it, it... Yeah, it's been in, in the works for at least three and a half years.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so we don't have to go out and rebid any of this? We have, because I thought that we had a guy come in talking about how he was gonna build it for us. Like, there was a guy...
Yeah, we, 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 we have a grants manager that had, had got us all the front end. Now we are approved, we have the money, so we're gonna have to, to... We're gonna come back with that contract to extend his services on the backend. But we also gotta hire an architect who actually does the final plans and all of that, so...
Okay, all right, very good. And then that was the two numbers that I saw, just to clarify. There was a 2.4 number, there was a 2.5 number, then there was a total 2.7 number somewhere in this paperwork. Is, what's the total that we're getting on this?
Okay, gotta remember it's a 90-10, so it's, it's, it's 2.7, but 10% of us, if that is on us, so...
That's what I'm asking, okay. I'm just making sure. Yeah, 2.7 is correct now. All right, just don't see it anywhere in here. Okay, all right, very good, sir. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Uh, I've got item nu- number 14. Um, it's for procurement for the installation of, uh, UV, our UV system. It's, it's just parts and pieces we need to keep on the shelf, because there's such a long lead time. And those parts do come with installation.
This was budgeted, correct?
Correct.
Just saved a little bit, I believe, if I remember correctly.
And it is the sole source.
All right, what you got next?
That's it.
That's all you got there?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Thank you.
That's unusual.
It is.
Very good.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good.
I got some paperwork for y'all.
Oh, Lord.
Just when everything was going...
We got you with your crayons again?
Thank you very much.
Love you, man. That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, this is about, yeah, okay.
So this is, uh, actually asking to transfer funds in the budget from one account to the other. But I just wanted to give y'all a little briefing on what we're actually asking for. This is a third eye system, which is a camera system that goes along with the trucks for GPS tracking and, uh, camera footage. And the first page gives you an idea of what the monthly costs and breakdowns are going with. The top one and the bottom one are what we actually are going with to start off with. And the middle one for $15 extra a month, we can do like a live stream to where if we have a problem, employee or a situation that's, uh, more high-profile, we can actually put a live screen on either my office or John's office or Murray's office to actually currently watch the, uh, the driver as they drive down the road. Um, but we won't actually use that unless actually necessary. So some of the, the, the features, as you see listed below, it gives you 360-degree camera angles all the way around the truck. So one of the, the other features is it, it chronological accident liability with on-demand video request. Man, that's a huge thing with, uh, saving on liability for accidents and stuff that we have for mitigation and accidents, because a lot of the accidents that we have might actually not be our fault. But a lot of times, the city unfortunately ends up being the brunt of it regardless, just because we're the, the bigger pocketbook. But this helps us defend ourselves in that. It also will give us like real-time alerts if we have sudden braking, um, erratic driving. You can even see down there that if it has distracted driving, if the driver is eating, drinking, talking on the cell phone, anything like that, it lets us know automatically to where we can address the situation immediately. Um, the, uh, up at the top, the, uh, the, the second, uh, the third one down, the point of service verification. What's cool about that is, is everywhere that the auto trucks picks up a garbage can, it so, it sends a signal back to the, uh, the system to where it leaves a breadcrumb trail, to where even our drivers have a button inside of it. If somebody comes, we come along and there's no can out there, or something's wrong with the can, or they have a can that's not a city of Fairhope can, they can hit a button. It automatically sends us an email with an address and a picture of the actual location of when it was. So we can say, if for some reason somebody calls in and says, hey, y'all didn't get my can today, and I can say, well, what's your address? And I can pull it up, and I can see if there was a truck in the way, if the can wasn't out there, or anything like that. I can automatically tell them what the problem was and how do we fix it. Uh, that's gonna be huge, I think, on our customer service side and trying to like make our routes more beneficial, like more efficient. And if you flip through, I think John's got one of the pictures up on the, uh, the screen right now. Like, if you were to hook up the camera system right now, that's what you would see. The only one that I don't see in that is the, well, yeah, yeah, no, it's on top left, NCAD. That is a horrible presentation of what it looks like. It's actually an extremely clear picture. John Thomas and I were actually commenting on how clear the picture is. I mean, you get live video, or not live, but you get actual video to where you can hear the employee listening to radio, singing to the radio, talking to himself, whatever he's doing. You hear the whole thing.
Oh, boy.
If you don't wanna know what they have to say about you, don't watch the videos. Um, so what we are actually asking for, if you flip all the way to the back page, it's what we're asking for right now is the installation of the equipment on the vehicles. Uh, we have five auto trucks that run garbage, start at midnight every night. And the ones with the automatic arms on it, they get the little bit higher end, because they actually have the hopper camera that watches the actual hopper. So like if the can dumps in, you can also monitor what kinda garbage is actually going in. That's how good the footage is, is you can actually see what garbage is going in. Is you can actually see what garbage is going in the truck when it dumps out. And then we have our two backdoor trucks, which are rear loaders. That's the reason why they're just a little bit cheaper is they don't have that one camera feature because there's, there's not an auto arm for it to monitor. Um, and then obviously, on the right-hand side, will be our monthly breakdown. And currently, like I said, we were getting the top one and the bottom one, so that's, uh, ninety dollars a month for the five top trucks. And then the bottom one, because it doesn't have the auto arm, the two last ones don't have that feature, so they'll be a little bit cheaper. Um, y'all have any questions or anything?
So, yeah, go-
I have some questions. Um, this, if I look at these costs, you said there were five trucks?
There's five auto trucks and two rear loader trucks.
There's seven total, right?
There's seven total trucks, yes.
Okay, that's fifty-seven thousand. Then we have five hundred and sixty dollars per month.
Yeah.
Times twelve months, times, well, that's all, just times twelve, right?
Times twelve.
Yeah, and what we're asking for right now is the installation portion of it.
So, but I was asking, I mean, it, it's probably good, probably good for liability purpose, probably good for maybe even finding lost income. Somebody's not supposed to have a can and we're, and they're not paying, or maybe vice versa, but you know, like a heads-up on these things, you know, we, we, you know, we have work sessions at every council meeting. And it, but it's, and, and so we get this in the work session and it's already on a resolution. Uh, just a, an unbudgeted expense. I realize that there's a proposition to move something from maintenance. Are we below budget in maintenance? Because they're moving it from maintenance to capital. I just, just, just looking after the money. This is all about just, you know, watching the money is all.
Right.
So, but-
I, I understand your concern. That's nobody's fault but mine for not bringing it to you before now.
I just feel like we hit every single meeting with a, with an item on the agenda that's completely new when we walk in this room. Sixty-three thousand dollars. And you also acted like it was already passed when you said, what we're going to do is, not what we're asking to do, but what we're going to do is.
Right, that's the plan that we hope that y'all are going to let us do.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't like the order. I'm, I'm sorry, it's not you. It's, I'm talking to everybody. I'm talking to the whole staff. I, I don't like the order of it all. It's, it's not, it's actually against our ordinances, to be honest with you. But that's, that's for another day. If I just use it, unfortunately, it could have been anybody saying that up there. It just happened to be up there. I apologize, but.
Do, do we know if we will save money on insurance? Is this, does this help us in that? I mean, on, on settlements maybe and litigation possibly, but do we get any kind of break on just our?
I, I honestly do not know that. I would think that there probably is a insurance break. I don't know if Kim, you possibly know. I would think that there is, being that we're monitoring it as closely as we are.
Yes. So this is what I was about to, exactly, right?
We, we, on a regular basis, when I say regular, I mean, at least a couple of times a week. We get calls about people claiming that we hit their buil- their buildings with our backdoor trucks. We have people claiming that we knocked their-
Yeah.
Their mailboxes over and we go back. We, we have fleet complete right now, which is this, kind of like a really cheap version of this that sometimes works and sometimes doesn't work. But a lot of times, we'll pull up on fleet complete and that truck wasn't even in the area during the accident. So that does save us, but this will help us even better. Uh, because we're getting, these people, hopefully, we're going to get a lot better response than we are at a fleet complete, plus better actual data.
Yeah, as far as claims against us.
I mean, we get calls all the time about people clipping corners and running over landscape features. We get mailboxes, signs. Uh, we've had cars that people claim, hey, you backed into my car while you were in this location. And we don't really have anything to go off on other than just their word.
Yeah.
Um, but this will give us the ability to back ourselves.
And I, I, I think that's the answer that-
Yeah.
That, uh, Councilman Burrell was looking for. This is not just another toy. Um, the, the question, you know, was more, how did we come up with this idea? Why are we here? Why do we want this gadget? And I think what you just-
Continual claims that we have no way of truly investigating.
If, in my opinion, that's the answer. That, that makes me understand better of why we're here and how it got here.
It is really what I'm looking for. You know, it's a justification of it, to spend it quickly and why.
Yeah, so, so that's all. So the, the rest of it is null and void, but you just answered, so.
Yeah, so we are trying to make ourselves more efficient on the way that sanitation in general operates. And one of the ways that we want to use this information is public education. Try to have a consistent message to everybody so we don't have individuals that are treated different than others. And then somebody calling and say, well, I need this done. Well, it doesn't really go against, it goes against our ordinances. But, well, you did that for Sally the other day. This will help us kind of rein that in to control where we're at. And then hopefully, get the information out there of what we're actually trying to do and what our ordinances and what we accept and our, our routes and all that stuff. We can better define our routes whenever we get a better definition of actually what we do every day. Like, if we can actually track the truck and know how many cans we're picking up, we can make our routes more efficient per day. Then we can get that information out to the public to where they understand. And more of their questions will be a click of a button away. Like, it won't have to be a phone call. It won't have to take up the time of our staffing that needs to be out solving problems, needs to be out researching better ways to do things. Instead, they're spending all their time on the phone.
Yeah, knowledge is power. We're gaining data. I, I can dig it, my friend. Um, yeah.
And I would eventually like to do this on all sanitation vehicles, where I'd like to do it eventually.
So now you just did what Jack was asking you to do. So good job, good job.
I am putting that out there that I would like to put it in the budget. And I would like to do this on the rest of the sanitation vehicles. That way, our trash and our recycling, with our MRF coming online, it, it's going to be a huge learning curve for the public and ourselves when this MRF comes online in October. So this will help us dramatically.
Yeah, this would be a good soft opening, huh? See if we can, see what we gain. Yeah, yeah, let's see if it helps. So we'll start with these, hopefully. Right.
Right.
And then we'll go from there, but it's a start. Thank you, George. Appreciate you, brother.
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilman Boon?
Is this the kind of gift that keeps on giving and the fact that there's a lot of data and information stored each day? How long is it stored for? And as it builds up, are we going to get more bills to pay for the, the god-awful amount of storage of every day of videoing?
Yes, I believe it holds on to the dat- we can ask for more data collection if we want, but it defaults automatically to a thirty-day. After thirty days, it refreshes and goes back to, to where it should not build up unless we ask for it, to where we want more data. Like, for it to stay longer.
Yeah, so I think what, so we don't have, there's no fees as far as storage or iCloud or some type of-
That is all include, the current thirty-day retain- retainage of the information is part of the program.
Okay.
And it, like I said, if, if it's been there for thirty days, it kicks it off and it's replaced with new. But we do have the option of going in there and extending that if we wanted to. All we got to do is call them.
Very good. Any other questions, council, from Mr. Laan?
Not for me.
All right, very good, George. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon. I've got item number twenty-three, which is a resolution for approval to purchase one-hundred-and-forty-four cartons of Narcan nasal spray using the, the funds from the McKesson Alabama Settlement Agreement.
Sounds good.
All right, any questions? All right, thanks.
As long as they got them, they got all your order-
How many were one-hundred-and-forty-four cartons last?
They got your orders. You going to be able to get it all?
It's going to be actually two hu- that'll be two-hundred-and-eighty-eight single doses. So we've already, um, we've talked to a couple of vendors through Thomas Hospital to see if that would even be possible.
Okay. Very good. Does it go back? No. All right, who's next? Ms. Love?
Number, number ten, um, is there, the previous funds for the airport's, um, terminal building only covered the construction of the building, did not cover the parking lot. So, um, the previous one-point-nine million, um, and this is the same, it's the same funding sources. Uh, they're just giving us, um, eighty-two thousand five hundred more from the infrastructure grant. And then Aldot also had given us money in that first, um, project. They are giving us four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So this is just so that the mayor can sign those agreements.
This is a parking lot for the, uh, lift. All right. Let's see, final adoption, what is, what is that one? That's the handbook, okay. Number six, final adoption, improve annexation of territory. Number six, Mike, is that, I was, I was good with that, Mike? I don't remember that, okay. No, it's Montrose. I do remember, okay. Jason Tickle, okay. Where's another ordinance? Okay, and Chris brought that one up. We haven't-
You have any questions on twenty or twenty-one dealing with the lift station?
Yeah, let's, it's not much to it, just a deed, someone signing over a deed, correct?
Yeah, it's just accepting a deed, that point-o-eight acres, and then the other one's a, a construction easement line access to the halo around that easement. Halo around the deeded property, rather.
It just gives us temporary access?
Correct.
Okay. Simple as that, okay. Glad that worked out, guys. Yep, let's see. Is that all of them, guys? Did we hit them all?
I think number eight, Councilman Martin, um, that is just, um, repealing the ordinance for the Historic Preservation Committee.
Yeah, that's Chris, yeah.
Correct.
So we're going to repeal that and then that's when we recreate a commission?
That's when we'll create a commission.
That's what Chris was doing, okay. All right, yeah, that is Chris. All right, all right, guys. Well, that seems to be all that we have. So council, do you want to take, uh, five minutes and let's get back to it? Let's, let's do five minutes and, uh, we'll be back here at, uh, let's do five-twenty. We'll be back at five-twenty, um, for our regular, that's the end of our work session.